Once again, we'll call the city, a special meeting, city council meeting for May 9th. Today, 20, May 9th, 2020, 4:30 today, we're running later for 47, but we'll call it to order. And we'll begin with Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
To the republic which stands.
One nation.
Under God. Indemnify all. Liberty, justice, and all.
And if we can have an invocation by Alder Lady McDowell.
Lord God, we thank you, we praise you for blessing us to see another day. We ask you, Lord, to come into this, our various places right now, bless us to be able to do everything decent and in order. Bless the city of Markham and bless each and every council member as we conduct this meeting in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Okay, roll call.
Alder Woman Hampton?
Yes, present.
Alderman Baron?
Present.
Alderman Jones?
Alder Woman McDowell?
Yes, present.
Okay, we'll go right into the city's attorney's report and attorney, you already heard that we do have our participants for these documents here with Attorney Michelle along with Howard Powers and Bernie Citron, the attorney.
All right. Our mayor, members of the council, and members of the public with respect to the city attorney's report, it appears under 5A, B, and C. Under 8, excuse me, under 5A, we have a proposed ordinance authorizing the execution of the intergovernmental agreement by and between the city of Markham and the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago for relocation of the East Markham Forest Main and an easement for the relocated East Markham Forest Main. And hopefully everyone has.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, attorney. My. Just to have a little clarification, as I was actually reading part of this here, this particular ordinance goes back many years, I think it's 1960. Just to bring us more to date, the city was actually going to vacate that particular property over to the MWRDGV, I mean, C, on a permanent basis, or, because I know that has something to do with that construction that's going on on 159th and 294th. Can you just give a little bit more clarity?
Yes, I know we have, I'm hearing background. Can you hear me?
Yeah, everybody, if you're not talking, it would kind of help.
Yeah, I thought I heard somebody in the background. Yeah, on the line, Alder Lady Hampton, we have Attorney Howard Powers, along with Attorney Bernie Citron, and of course Attorney Fountain. With respect to that, I would ask that they join in and provide some clarity to the Alder Lady and the rest of the council, the importance of this and what it is that we need to be doing with respect to this. So Attorney Powers, are you there?
Yes, I'm here and I'm, just as a brief overview, and then I'll turn it over to Attorney Citron and Attorney Brown Fountain. But there is a force.
Should we open the floor to them?
I make a motion to open the floor up to Attorney, I'm sorry, what's his name?
Yeah.
Attorney Powell, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And while the floor is open, can you just add, you know, just for all the attorneys, Attorney Powell, Attorney Fountain, and the other attorneys as well?
Okay, that, so that's a motion and second. Who's second?
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, go ahead.
First of all, I'd like, this is Howard Powers speaking. I'd like to thank everybody for giving up their Saturday afternoon to join us. This, these last few items that the council is considering today are very critical to our proposed project, which I'm sure if you've had a chance to drive by, you see we're working diligently and we hope to proceed and get this thing off the ground and running. With respect to the first ordinance proposed, the intergovernmental agreement with MWRD, there is a Forest Main that runs down 161st Street in Markham, and that Forest Main is in the way of our proposed development. Attorney Citron and Attorney Brown Fountain have worked with MWRD to prepare an intergovernmental agreement which allows the city of Markham to relocate this Forest Main. The developers on this project, Schenel, pursuant to be second agreement on the agenda, have agreed to pay for and indemnify the city for all the costs of the relocation of the Forest Main. So that's the general overview. I turn it over to Attorney Citron or Attorney Brown Fountain for additional background.
Thank you, this is Attorney Citron. Again, I echo Mr. Powers and we appreciate guys taking out a part of a weekend to, we hope, these will be the final agreements that are needed for this project to continue going forward. Just as some additional background, state law says intergovernmental agreements can only be between governments. So that's why this newer relocation agreement is between MWRD and the city of Markham. There was an MWRD meeting a couple of weeks ago. Again, it was a virtual meeting somewhat like this one. Mayor Powers was part of that and expressed his support and the villages or the city's support for this project. But the actual agreement has to be, has to be between Markham and MWRD. But because Markham is not the entity that's actually going to undertake the work, both physically and paying for it, that's as Howard, Mr. Powers indicated, the second agreement basically says that the Schenel 420 entity who's doing all the development is 100% responsible for all costs involved with relocating that Forest Main and everything associated with it, insurance, indemnification, and everything else. The idea is to build the new Forest Main. The IGA contemplates that the Forest Main will be constructed, will be inspected by MWRD when it's completed. And once it's completed, the existing Forest Main will be allowed to be cut and taken out as need be. So that's the basic premise behind this. The last agreement or the last easement, the last ordinance approves an easement over an area that seems to be sort of lost in the switches a little bit. We have to get our storm water across to that existing C U D D ditch that's located there. And I recently saw that the Calumet Union Drainage District did approve everything involved with this from a technical standpoint. We believe that the area that the drainage water has, the storm water has to cross, is actually still under the control of Markham. It was not included in the, in the original vacation ordinances here. So what you have in front of you is an ordinance granting us an easement to just drain the water across it. So it enables the project to work. This is something that was required by MWRD in their review of the site development permit, which they are ready to issue. They raised the question of how are you going to get the water there? We indicated this was the method in which we proposed to do this. And we are again proposing this or asking, requesting Markham to approve this easement. And of course, all the construction, everything else is at the developer's expense. So with that, it's a lot of paper for what are really somewhat simple concepts. Relocate the Forest Main, do it at our cost and expense, and allow the water to drain. And both Howard and I are here to answer any further questions.
If you finish, Bernie Citron, may I speak now? Is it okay?
I'm done.
Okay. I would just like to add that I had an opportunity to review your documents as well as I actually participated in communications, telephone, as well as meetings with MWRD. Everything here, we wanted to make sure that the obligations that need to be met, since they have to be met in name of the city of Markham, I wanted to ensure, to make sure what they were. MWRD wants to deal directly with us, which they have, because we are governmental, a governmental entity and an intergovernmental agreement has to be with us. So we went over all the plans, all the, all the requirements, and we even had to get involved, Calumet Drainage Union Drainage District, which they came in, they reviewed the site plan, they on board. So everything here was satisfied, Calumet Drainage District, it was satisfied, MWRD. We're being compliant with everything. The most important document here today is that there's a lot of obligations on behalf of the city of Markham that's being undertaken with these documents. The main thing is that they will actually reimburse and be ultimately responsible for this. That's one of the ordinances before you, which you could see, and that's the one that's the most important to me because these are a lot of obligations we're undertaking, it's for a development, a development in which our developer is going to do. And they will take the responsibility to do these things. These things will be done in accordance with all that Calumet Drainage Union District and Water Reclamation District. So we're being compliant and they will take on the responsibility.
I do thank you all for giving me good clarification on, on this ordinance that we're about to embark on. Thank you so much. I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
All right, let me just interject a question, if I may. Now, with respect to the amount, I noticed roughly about a million plus. In terms of the billing for that, will that directly come to Markham and then hand it over to Schenel? Or will Schenel, at that particular point, go ahead and pay it and we get receipted on it so that there's a paper trail indicating how this occurred?
Attorney, I can tell you that it's been kind of both, but it's more so they've been receiving, but when we receive them, I receive some bills and I just get them right to them and they've taken care of them.
Perfect, perfect. All right then. All right, so this overall payout is close to a million dollar project? Did I hear that right? Just for the drainage? Yeah, a million eighty thousand. I'm sorry, let me see here. Yes, one million thousand. Page six. Page six. Okay, all right. My next question is, have we, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, have all the tools and protocols been set in place so that the flow won't have a hindrance on our residents? I remember that project in Behrens Ward, when they set up Walmart, the other area, you know, water came in and started, you know, opening up his, his ditches where his former, his late wife was really pushing. So I mean, it was everything in place far as protecting our residents from overflowing water with this changeover?
Um, I can, I, I can respond to it. Did one of you all, Howard, want to respond to, but I can't as well, just whoever wants to respond to it. Okay, I guess I responded to it. Alderman, to, to tell you the reason why, the biggest reason why this MWRD wants to keep the municipality involved is to assure just that, you know, they, that's part of it anyway. It's not the whole reason, but they, they, that will assure that this is done correctly. And when I had to, to go to the meeting, the virtual meeting, that's part of what we assure that, that things are going to flow correctly and will be, that's really what we're doing. Basically, MWRD and the city of Markham is really assuring that the private entity, if you will, is going to carry out what they should in the movement of this. And things like what you're mentioning with water flow don't become an issue and that retention is in the right places as well.
If I may, Mayor, may I add on to that?
Please do.
That's why it took a while for this, these agreements to go through. We actually had, if you can see the attachments, and I've also had email copies, if you want to see larger versions, I'm not sure if you had the larger versions of them, but MWRD and their team, their legal department, their engineers reviewed this. We had to have a site approval that was approved by Calumet Drainage District as well. So we had a lot of entities look at these, we have engineers, MWRD, Calumet Drainage Union District. Everyone was looking at this and these are issues that they were concerned about. They looked at all those issues. And there were some things that had to be changed in negotiations, so that's why it took a minute. And we were not on the agenda to last meeting because we're still negotiating, making sure that it had all the reviews and all the approvals that was necessary to go for. So I feel comfortable saying that this has been reviewed by engineers and different entities that would be involved that actually regulate the water flow for the city of Markham as well as other entities.
You're, you're going to see a lot of the, that blue and white little car with the Greater Water Reclamation District of Chicago on site over there quite a bit, keeping an eye on this whole matter. So they're, they're really going to make sure of that.
And Attorney Fountain, you mentioned earlier about obligations. What is our obligations, you know, for this project, if any? Mention obligation, but you didn't go in details. What is our obligation?
Our obligation under, if you look inside the first ordinance, the ordinance regarding authorization of intergovernmental agreement, all of our obligations, this is agreement between us and MWRD. The agreement between us that actually is between Schenel Properties, another ordinance, that's the one in which although we are obligated, we're the ones who, MWRD wanted to make sure that, because these properties are still held in the name of the city of Markham, that this project was to move forward, that everything before they did give any permits or any green light, everything was done in accordance with what their standards were. So we still own the property, so if there's anything done on this property, we're ultimately responsible. We have to ensure that everything is going to be done properly because it's in our name. But we have another ordinance, the ordinance between Schenel and ourselves, in which they ultimately was possible for everything. We're only taking on the responsibility because it's in our name. This other document survives the clause and once we transfer the property, it's ultimately their responsibility. It's their responsibility to pay all the costs and do everything that's required. They are obligated underneath that ordinance. But in a government agreement, because MWRD didn't want to actually deal directly with them since the property is still in our name and we couldn't allow them to develop the property, but it's still in our name. So we had to deal directly with MWRD. We had to deal directly with Calumet Drainage District. I spoke to Sherry, the commissioner over there, made sure she got copies of the site plans. We went over it. She knows the changes that were going on over there. She approved the site plan. She had an opportunity to speak. They had questions about them. She had an opportunity to get those questions answered. And she, after looking at the plan, her department, as well as approving it, she put it in writing that she approves it. That's another prerequisite MWRD had before they were even considered as going forward. So we had MWRD, Calumet Drainage Union, and the engineers behind MWRD. Everyone looked at this to make sure that this is going to be a good fit and everything was going to work properly. Right now, it took a while, but everything has been approved. And ultimately, we are the ones who are standing behind this with the intergovernmental agreement. But right behind us and who's going to stand forth in our place and pay all the costs is Schenel Properties. And that's why both ordinances, all three need to be passed. I recommend all three to be passed because the project needs all three to go forward. But the one that really indemnifies us and takes us and makes sure we don't have to pay any costs is the one with Schenel Properties.
Well, one of my concerns is hypothetically 50 to 100 years from now, you know, once we're gone and maybe Chanel probably starts a bankruptcy and, or something like that, does it fall back on us to take care of this ditch or are we free from this? Or are we engaged in this forever? This contract, you know, does, do we get penalized once, if anything happens to Chanel Properties?
Well, right now, this project is for the relocation of the, this project should be completed before the development even can start. It has to be completed. So we are obligated until development starts, but we have them identifying us until development starts. We anticipate development to be started this year, which means that it is possible that, like you stated, that somebody can go bankrupt or something like that. Well, the money's used to do the project. They won't have the money to do the project. So there would be no need for them to indemnize because they wouldn't have the money to do the project if that happened.
I, I think the most, this is Attorney Citron, the most important thing, first of all, the relocated Forest Main is going to be owned and operated by MWRD. So there will never be any responsibility once it's completed by the city of Markham. Anything to do with that Forest Main, ultimately, when MWR, when it's finished and it's accepted by the MWRD, it is entirely their responsibility. So nothing to do with the Forest Main will ever be Markham's responsibility.
Right.
That was my question there. Okay, good. So we clear. After this is done, it's just an agreement. So we're clear after this is done.
Right, Alderman, because we don't, we don't own it now. You know, they, you know, we're just getting in the middle of it to, you know, to, you know, if you will, kind of babysit the project and hand it back to MWRD. They just want to make sure that everybody does it right, you know, and then we'll hand it back over to them. But we've got, we've got nothing at stake here, really. You know, once it's done, which will be done before the structure even really gets going, we're just moving something that's been over there forever, or for a while, and we're moving it to another location and then we'll hand it back over to them.
It holds more than enough capacity for what's coming in. You know, that's all. As long as you all take care of that and with the scope of the project, I see that. My last question is, how long will this project take? Do you have a timeline?
Howard, I think that's.
Yep, this is Howard Powers. Can you hear me? This is Howard Powers. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Right now, Alderman Jones, our preliminary schedule calls for us to complete this building in September or October of 2021. So our schedule is really fast. The building is very large. As you can see, if you've driven by, the number of workers and the amount of work we've already completed. So we feel confident that we can hit that target. Our contractors have been doing a superior job. And we believe that it will be completed by September or October of 2021.
But I, I think, Alderman, were you asking as well about the main itself will be done way before then?
Well, I mean, as long as it falls within the scope, you know, I mean, I was thinking about the main, but.
I, I apologize if I misunderstood.
No, no, that's okay. You didn't know that date either.
Yeah, we need to know both, but I, I think specifically the Forest Main will be done way, way ahead.
Oh, yeah. I apologize.
That'll be done first and it's good that you gave us some numbers on the other because that's good for us to know.
The, well, the Forest Main, we anticipate completing that within the next four months because we cannot proceed to complete the building without relocating that. So we anticipate this happening within the next four months.
Okay, do you have another question? Okay, Alderman, Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Just further answer to your question, if you look at page 11, Article 6A, it does talk about the upon final completion and final acceptance by MWRD, control and operation, maintenance, and use will to MWRD. So just for first answer to your question, take. Okay? Thank you. Okay, Article 6, page 11. Okay.
Okay. I guess for the, at least the, we probably, we can go in succession here. I mean, I think we, we should have covered all the documents. Do we have any other questions about any of the documents that were, which each one is and how we're going to, how you want to execute them here? We just go in order?
I think we still have, A is being proposed right now for consideration. Correct.
Okay.
We have to actually pass, waive the reading on, this would be ordinance 2266, correct?
Yes. Wanda, that's your ward.
Are you muted out, Alder Lady?
Wanda, that's your ward.
Okay, I make a motion to waive the reading for ordinance number 2266 and ordinance authorizing the execution of the intergovernmental agreement by, by and between the city of Markham and the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago for relocation of the East Markham Forest Main and easement for the relocation of the East Markham Forest Main.
Second.
A second.
Okay, all, motion by Alder Lady, Alder Lady McDowell, second by Alderman Jones for waiving the reading of the, for ordinance authorizing the execution of the intergovernmental agreement by, by and between the city of Markham and the Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago for relocation of the East Markham Forest Main and the easement for relocated East Markham Forest Main. Question? Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Hi. All right, this is ordinance 2266, correct?
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
Right.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2226 and ordinance that authorization for execution of the intergovernmental agreement by and between the city of Markham and the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District for the Greater Chicago for relocation of the East Markham Forest Main and easement of relocating the East Markham Forest Main.
Second.
Motion by Alder Lady McDowell, second by Alderman Jones to adopt ordinance authorizing execution of intergovernmental agreement by and between the city of Markham and the Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago for relocation of the East Markham Forest Main and the easement for the relocated East Markham Forest Main. Question? Roll call.
Alderman Baron?
Yes.
Alder Woman McDowell?
Yes.
Alder Woman Hampton?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes. Next, we have under 5D, excuse me, 5B, a proposed ordinance authorizing the execution of the Forest Main relocation agreement by, between the city of Markham and Schenel Properties, number 420 LLC.
Okay. I make a, a motion to adopt ordinance number 2267.
You got to waive.
I'm sorry, to waive, I apologize. I make a motion to waive the reading for ordinance number 2267. Ordinance authorizing the execution of the Forest Main relocation agreement by and between the city of Markham and Schenel Property, 420 LLC.
Second.
Motion by Alder Lady McDowell, second by Alderman Jones to waive reading for ordinance authorizing the execution of the Forest Main relocation agreement by and between the city of Markham and Schenel Properties, number 420 LLC. All in favor?
Hi. I make a motion to, sorry. I make a motion to adopt the ordinance number 2267 and ordinance that authorize the execution of the Forest Main relocation agreement by and between the city of Markham and Schenel Property, 420 LLC.
Second.
Motion by Alder Lady McDowell, second by Alderman Jones to adopt ordinance authorizing the execution of the Forest Main relocation agreement by and between the city of Markham and Schenel Properties, number 420 LLC. Question? Roll call.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alder Woman Hampton?
Yes.
Alder Woman McDowell?
Yes.
Alderman Baron?
Yes.
Next, we have under 5C, a proposed ordinance approving the granting of an easement by the city of Markham to Scannell Properties, number 420 LLC over a portion of unimproved 161st Place.
Okay, I make a motion to waive the reading for ordinance number 2268 and ordinance approving the granting of an easement by the city of Markham to Scannell Property 420 LLC over a portion of unimproved at 161st, 161st Street Place.
Second.
Motion by Alder Lady McDowell, second by Alderman Jones to waive reading for an ordinance approving and granting of an easement by the city of Markham to Scannell Properties, number 420 LLC over a portion of unimproved, unimproved 161st Place. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2268 and ordinance that's approving the grant, granting of an easement by the city of Markham to Scannell Property 420 LLC over a portion of unapproved at 161st Street Place.
Second.
Motion by Alder Lady McDowell, second by Alderman Jones to adopt ordinance approving and granting of easement by the city of Markham to Scannell Properties, number 420 LLC over a portion of unimproved 161st Place. Question? Roll call?
Alder Woman McDowell?
Yes.
Alderman Baron?
Yeah.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alder Woman Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor? All in a half.
Okay, next we would go to public session. Well, actually, it should be new business, but we'll go to new business before we go to public session, if that's okay with the. That's typically what we do. Does it matter? I mean, how, how, counsel, how would you want to proceed?
That's fine.
Okay, well, I guess.
Well, if it makes a difference, I don't have, I didn't have any submissions for public comment unless somebody else did?
No, I, I didn't get anything at the office either, so. Okay, well, there, that, that helps, okay, then we'll proceed on, I just didn't know what we had, so. All right, since, since we have nothing in public session, then new business, Alderman Jones?
I just have a, just a general question, have we received any funding ourselves for this project, for our land and property?
Funding as far as.
Payments for property, for land?
I, I, Alderman, I think you might, you might know that better than me, but I can check, you don't know? You're here before me on this one.
The treasurer? Shady?
Know that I know of.
So, so I guess, Alderman, what, what you mean, have, have we, have we collected any monies from, from this property or this land or any of the agreements? I, I mean, again, that's, if that, if that's the question, is that the question?
Hey, I see, I see all this money floating around, I'd like to find, get some too. A million dollar project for a sewer, man, I can't wait till we get ours.
Oh, okay. Well, I think that, um, the, the attorneys might know a little bit more about some of the history of what we should be getting, what kind of agreements were made. I'll, I'll make it a point to look a little closer into that. I'll give you some definitive answer and certainly talk with Mr. White, and Howard Powers in that group about what should be involved with that.
If I may. Wasn't this placed on the floor quite a few meetings ago in reference to how we want to actually move forward with these finances? I mean, that, that, that has been discussed many a times, Brother Alderman Jones, on how this project was actually going to be led.
Yeah, I mean, how are you going to get?
That was all, that was all involved in a contractual agreement that we had set up with this particular company to build, to build on that particular land.
And so what you're going to get, Alder Lady?
I said it again.
Jones?
Yeah, because I didn't hear what you said.
No, I'm talking to Wanda, I'm talking to Hampton, I just wanted you to receive any money. That was the question on the floor.
We have not received anything at this moment, Alderman Jones. This was a, a, a unique project that we were moving forward with. We agree with this particular agreement on how we're going to actually move, move forward with the finances on this land and with the agreement with the developers.
Alderman Hauser, five minutes ago. Alderman Hauser, that's five minutes ago, that's what the treasurer already said.
Yes, so, I'm sorry, maybe I'm not understanding your question. I'm sorry. If I'm on the right track. I just need to see if I'm on the right track, I'm sorry, maybe I'm not understanding.
This is my report, I was asking for a report under my report to the treasurer. So.
Okay.
That's my question.
Did, did, did you get anything answered or do you want me to look at something else for you?
No, she answered it, thank you.
Okay. All right, anything else, Alderman Jones, under your report?
No, thank you.
All right. Alderman Baron?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay, and Alder Lady Hampton?
Nothing at this time, ma'am.
Okay, and Alder, Alder Lady McDowell?
I just want to wish everyone, all moms out there and the mothers that's on the council panel, a happy Mother's Day.
Okay, and there wasn't a line for me, but I'm, I'm under, you all under new business anyway, so I don't have anything other than happy Mother's Day to everybody as well. I think that's a good one for, for the, for the, for the, for the day. And I want to thank, we didn't, I don't think we closed the floor, did we ever close the floor to everybody? We just kind of moved on, we're sorry about that, Madam Clerk. We, we, we didn't officially close the floor, so. But anyway, thank them for participating. So if anybody wants to do that, I guess for the record, you can. And then we can move to number eight.
Close the floor to new business, just thinking of it. No, you all, you all opened the floor to the attorneys and no one ever closed the floor.
Oh. Okay, I make a motion to close the floor to the attorneys.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
You never opened or closed the floor for the new business, I mean, excuse me, for the public session as well.
No, didn't do any of that, so etiquette's way off here, you know? I didn't realize I was supposed to do anything until I was saying goodbye to them, so. All right, sorry folks, okay, is there, is there any room for number eight? Somebody want to take care of number eight for us?
Make a motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I guess we're good, folks, have a good Saturday afternoon and a good Mother's Day.
All right, you all have a good saying.
Okay.